The whole meeting, the first item on the agenda is a call to order, which I'm doing now, and a roll call. Uh, Village Manager Corrali, could you do the roll call?
Sure. Trustee Hallwax.
Yeah.
Trustee Listner, trustee Mulvaney, trustee Onderdunk, trustee Rubin, trustee Vrie.
Here.
We have a quorum. Um, before we get started, trustee Listner is out of town, trustee Mulvaney is ill, but he's agreed to drag himself out of his sick bed to participate by phone, but we need a motion to allow that.
So.
Is there a second?
That's second.
Okay, uh, do we, do we need a voice vote?
We'll do a roll call again.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Onderdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries. Welcome, Pete, and I hope you're feeling okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we are live streaming this meeting and have posted the links to that livestream on the village's social media pages. We will make the recording available on the village's YouTube channel following the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Normally, our committee, the whole meeting, would be held in our first-floor conference room, but, um, because of the still ongoing pandemic, uh, we're doing that here where there's more space. Um, this is a large space. It doesn't necessarily lend itself to informal discussions, but we're going to do our best and we ask the folks in the audience to do their best. We have masks available, so, um, feel free to use them. Um, you don't have to rely on that 35-year-old judge. The second item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board regarding non-agenda items. Um, I'll request that public comments on agenda items be, uh, made when we reach that item on the agenda. Any comments are limited to three minutes and I'll notify you when the time is up. Uh, if anyone wants to share a comment on a non-agenda item, uh, speak up now. Okay, I don't see anyone, so that takes us to the third item on the agenda, which is staff presentation and discussion of the planned process to update the 1996 Village Comprehensive Plan. Um, and I'll ask our Development Services Manager, Taylor Baxter, um, and the Plan Commission Chairman, Bruce Huvard, to present. Taylor.
President Corrali, Bruce Huvard. Uh, we're here to discuss, uh, update actually before the community writes out the rules. I think the microphone's not on, Taylor. Let me just check that, sorry. Test, test, test. No, we're going before.
Next slide.
There you go.
Testing.
There we go.
Thank you.
Okay. So, this is a, uh, discussion of a, of an, of an ongoing conversation that's in brewing since, since before I got here in Glencoe in 2019, um, about updating, rewriting the village's comprehensive plan. Uh, so what is a comprehensive plan? Um, according to the American Planning Association, a comprehensive plan is the official statement of a local government establishing policies for its future long-range development. That's a pretty broad statement, so we're going to dig a little bit deeper into exactly what that means. So, uh, what a comprehensive plan should do, um, it should provide decision-makers with guidance, clear guidance for developing, um, um, community development-related policies, regulations, programs, projects, and so on. This is really a guiding document, um, for decision-makers, for boards, commissions, um, staff, and so on, decision-makers in the village. Um, specifically for, uh, some specific examples of that would be, um, guiding future decisions for such things as variations, special use permits, zoning amendments, et cetera. So if somebody comes to the village and says, "I want to rezone a piece of property, I want a special use permit, I want a variation," or, uh, "We want to update the zoning code for some specific person, uh, purpose," the comprehensive plan should really provide, um, some specific guidance, um, for how to make that decision. Um, it should include implementation guidance, um, for projects and policies, um, that will help the village meet, um, its vision and goals from the plan. Um, we're going to get more into, um, the details of how this process will look, um, but a large part of this planning process is, as a community-driven process, um, in which the village will, uh, develop its, uh, a vision for the, um, for itself and goals and objectives and policies and projects to, to support that vision. Next slide, please. So why do we need to, uh, update the comprehensive plan? Um, first of all, the current plan was adopted in 1996 and it had an intended 20-year planning horizon, so we're now about six years beyond that. By the time we started today, um, that the new plan, uh, would be adopted, we'd be about eight years past the intended, um, sunset of the existing plan. Um, in short, the current plan doesn't meet community needs. Um, it met the needs of the community in 1996, um, it provided sufficient guidance at that time, um, but as we, um, come across challenging issues today, um, it's, it's difficult to find clear guidance, um, in the plan. Um, the topics that it addresses, um, have, have changed in the last 20 years. Um, a lot of the time in the, in the current plan, the language that's used, um, is a bit vague for what we would want. Um, there's a lot of talk about, um, exploration of topics, further discussion of topics, um, calls for decision-makers to consider things, but there's not really clear policy guidance, um, that can be used for a lot of the decisions that we need to, it to be used for today. Also, best practices for comprehensive planning have changed in the last 20-plus years. Um, this is now, uh, best practices are, um, call for more, much more of a community-driven process, kind of a bottom-up, public outreach and engagement-based process as opposed to a top-down process. Um, there's much more of an emphasis on topics of sustainability, equity, and resilience. Um, there's also more of a systems-based approach that, that is an approach to planning that deals with interrelated topics, the way that topics work with each other, um, things like housing and land use and transportation, et cetera, as opposed to considering each of these things separately, which, uh, a more traditional or a more 20th-century planning approach, um, would have tended to do. Um, there's also more of an emphasis on regional issues, how the decisions that we make in Glencoe might impact, um, the Chicago region, and also decisions that are made by other people in the Chicago region might impact Glencoe. Next slide, please. Um, next plan, the planning process, actually we have, uh, the Chairman of the, uh, Plan Commission, Bruce Huvard, here, and I'm going to turn the podium over to him to, uh, get a little bit into, um, the proposed planning process, um, and how this will work. Um, per the village code, the, the Plan Commission is the lead body tasked with developing, uh, the comprehensive plan, so I'll, uh, turn it over to Chairman Huvard at this point.
Is that, was it 10? Probably wasn't, but that's it. What's the next slide?
Can you go to the? I think that was, this one you, okay. Previous slide, I'll take this, the next slide, thank you. So this, uh, planning process is, uh, likely to take about 18 to 24 months, um, from kickoff to completion, so it's a fairly lengthy process. A lot of that is community engagement, um, throughout the process. Um, again, per the village code, this process is, is led by the Plan Commission, um, but we do intend for this to be a, a robust public engagement process with outreach to the public, the general public, um, but also with significant coordination with, um, other village boards and commissions, decision-making bodies, for example, Sustainability Task Force, um, Zoning Commission, Council for Inclusion and Community, Historic Preservations, uh, Commission, so on and so on, they'll all be, um, involved in this process in coordination with the Plan Commission. Um, the final approval, uh, for adoption of the, of the comprehensive plan is by the village board, um, but the Plan Commission is, is tasked with really the development of the plan. Okay, next slide, please. Uh, we touched a little bit on the topics that a, uh, comprehensive plan, um, will focus on. A lot of this is, uh, you know, they're, they're best-practice topics that, uh, you know, that the APA and, and, uh, other planning, um, advisory, uh, bodies, um, recommend that we focus on, but a lot of the, the, the emphasis on the plan, on what topics we, we focus on the most, um, comes out of this community-based process. It is a bottom-up process, um, where we, uh, um, we don't go into it with a, with a finished product in mind, um, it really is developed through this process. And at this point, I'll turn it over to the Chairman Huvard.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me? It's a pleasure to, uh, see you all, especially people that I used to serve with on the Plan Commission. Uh, the topics of the, of the comprehensive plan are, um, potentially very, very broad, and that is a challenge and a problem. Uh, we'd like to do something that's useful, we'd like to do something that, um, the community can use, the staff can use in making decisions, but it's, it's not always so easy to do. Uh, it's true that the plan that we did in 1996, um, was based on assumptions from some time ago, but it isn't as if they didn't think about what the community needs. I'm just going to cite a couple of things that are in this plan. This is the mission statement from the 1996 plan. "The purpose of Glencoe's 20-year comprehensive plan is to continue a commitment to preserving and enhancing this desirable and attractive residential community." I think that's part of what, uh, Taylor was getting at when he said that the plan statements are sometimes, um, broad. "The plan is intended to emphasize the small-town character of Glencoe as a safe, uncrowded, and pleasant village that is part of the Chicago metropolitan area." I'm not sure how we would write that today, but that's part of what community engagement does. We look at statements like that and we say, "Is that describe who we are today?" Uh, there's a number of major recommendations at the very beginning of the existing 1996 plan. One is housing for seniors. Many older residents of Glencoe who wish to sell their large homes are unable to find suitable replacement housing. That was a viable concern then. I ask you, do you think it's a viable concern today? And yet, the statement is here in the plan, so the, having the statement in the plan is not a sufficient guarantee that something will be done. There's a statement in the pa, plan about the Public Works Service Building that, uh, maybe we should find another alternative location for it. We worked, uh, Gary and Dudley and I worked on the downtown plan, uh, finished about three or four years ago, and in the downtown plan, we had a number of potential options, I'm sure Gary will remember, for redevelopment of the public worksite. The options were intended to provide additional types of housing in the village, alternative housing types. Do you think that the community has really grasped at that opportunity? It's in the downtown plan. I'm not as familiar as the board would be with what has been going on, but, again, we have a statement right now in the plan about providing alternative housing. So, the plan is, um, it won't cure everything in the village simply by having statements. And so, it's not the, it's, what I'm focusing on so much is not coming up with a document that has all of these statements in them that everybody is looking for. What I think we ought to do is engage the community so that we develop more consensus about where to, where to go and use that document and the process of getting to that document as a means of, um, propelling us further into the future. The statements themselves will be great, but they won't be enough. On, on some of the, um, the newer ways of thinking, I mean, obviously, this, this plan from 1996 was essentially concerned with the existing land use plan, how the streets are laid out, how the lots are laid out, setbacks, proximity to parks and public space, streetscape and amenities. The physical layout, you know, arguably does, uh, lead us all to think about a lot of other topics, uh, besides just the beauty of the, of the community. It does influence a lot of other social and moral values. I think the newer concepts that the APA, the eco-districts are trying to get at is to think a little more broadly about how basic land use decisions in the village affect some of these other components. So I'm just gonna, if I have time, if I'm not going over, just want to go over one or two, sort of the key concepts that are sort of different. The APA calls this a livable built environment as one of its, uh, primary goals. It says, "Traditional comprehensive plans typically treat the different components as separate elements. The built environment is a complex system made up of many interacting elements." So the idea is to try and bring all of these elements together and not simply discuss one element like, um, where the streets are going, but to think of it in terms of transit-oriented development, a complete, um, street system encouraging the use of bicycles, uh, accessible public facilities and spaces, um, conserving resources. Sustainability is also, um, a key factor in this. A lot of, uh, planning these days is looking at how we can have more local food sources, how we can lower our carbon footprint, um, what steps we can take in terms of planning for the community that address those goals. Those are topics that were probably not thought of very much in 1996. And the last topic I'll just mention, uh, briefly is, is equity. Uh, these are terms that, you know, when you talk to planners, there's a little bit of planner speak. Sorry, with all the planners involved. Uh, they're, they're terms which are a little hard to define quickly. Even in the same document from the American Planning Association, um, equity, they talk about, refers to, uh, dealing with increasing inequality, not just in, in economic status, but also in basic quality of life issues. Uh, another way, uh, to look at it, they have elsewhere in the document, is to ensure fairness and equity in providing for the housing, services, health, safety, and livelihood of all citizens and groups. What does that mean? It means considering the land use decisions as it affects different groups of populations within the village, those who are, uh, at some disadvantage, those who have special needs. In other words, when you think about transportation or you think about some of these other characteristics, think of how they affect all of the community. Affordable housing and housing options is certainly another one of those subjects in there. So, I am humbled by the idea of trying to start this process because you're trying to embody the hopes and desires of many citizens, all with different ideas about where the village should be headed, and, um, the Plan Commission is a very able group of, uh, volunteers. We're very lucky to have the people we have, and I'm looking forward to working with them. I think that when we talk with our residents, when we talk to other of the task force and bodies in the village that work on these issues, uh, will generate a lot of ideas. I hope everybody will tune in and come to hear them, and we'll work our best to come up with a document that does advance some of our goals for the next 20 years.
Thank you, uh, and, uh, thank you for volunteering to serve Glencoe.
Chairman Huvard, next slide, please, Chairman. Uh, so to move forward with this process, um, the creation of this plan is, it's a, it's a resource-intensive plan. It is going to involve, again, 18 to 24 months of work. Um, there is a, a significant amount of research, um, data collection, analysis, um, community engagement facilitation, um, a, as well as just the, the creation of the plan, the creation of graphics, um, writing, and so on, um, involved in this plan. Um, this, this work is, is beyond the, the capabilities of staff and the Plan Commission by itself. Uh, for that reason, we do need, um, to bring on a consultant, a planning consultant, to, to help with the, the creation of this plan. Staff has, has recommended the retention of TESCA associates. Um, I think that everyone is likely familiar with TESCA. They have a long relationship with, with Glencoe. Um, Lee Brown is here representing TESCA. Um, he has, uh, I believe, about two decades of experience in, in Glencoe, working directly with the Plan Commission, um, on a variety of issues, from everyday, uh, you know, planning commission things, uh, agenda items that come before the commission, um, to the creation of such things as, as the downtown plan a couple of years ago. Um, staff is, uh, is confident, um, that TESCA is, is able to, um, and well-suited to, to, um, to lead this, um, in the lead role of consultant on this plan. Um, they have, uh, given us some, uh, proposal documents which are part of this, uh, agenda packet, um, which includes, uh, three sub-consultants, one for real estate and housing analysis, one for, uh, community engagement, and one for, um, engineering and infrastructure, which will be working with TESCA. Um, and so, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to, um, Lee, uh, to give a recent, brief introduction of himself and TESCA for anyone who, um, doesn't know him. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks, and welcome back.
Thank you. So I do have, uh, the, the joy of having 20 years of directly working with you as your village planner, but we, TESCA associates, are more than Lee Brown. Um, I, I thought of the analogy this morning, I, most of you probably remember the, um, I think it was Harris Bank that used to call itself the big bank with the little bank inside. TESCA Associates essentially is the, not the big bank, but the big planning firm on the inside of your small planning function. You have a small planning function, but a lot of issues, and you've been able, over the past 20 years, to address those with 20-odd additional planners working for TESCA through your planning staff. We are the extension of your staff. We bring resources that you can't afford to have, uh, in-house all the time. We're experts in community engagement. We are experts in understanding issues and listening to communities and translating those into documents that are useful going forward. No, it's not since 192019. I was, uh, engaged in 2002, and part of the issues that were on the floor at the time were the downtown and updating the comprehensive plan. And as much as the 20-year horizon that is, uh, stated in the existing comprehensive plan, communities look far down the road with their ideas and their vision, but need to regularly update them as changes occur. I don't think you should think of the comprehensive plan as a document that will serve your needs for the next 20 years. You need to update them and consider how the changes, and we have seen more than four separate echelons of changes over that 20-year period that would have deserved an update. So fundamentally, we provide the opportunity for the village to do its own comprehensive plan rather than shipping it out to a comprehensive planning agency that will come back with the document. This is your opportunity to be directly involved and to have a professional who can lead you and aid you in that process. We believe that there are extraordinary resources within this community that need to be engaged as part of the process, rather than it is just the staff or just the elected and appointed. Um, we will work with you to assure that all of the, um, appointed organizations and the affiliated agencies outside are brought into this process and meaningfully brought into the process, but more importantly, that the community itself feels comfortable, uh, not standing up at, at a podium like this, but engaging from their home, from their phone, from all the opportunities that we're going to put in front of them, because not everybody feels comfortable at a, at a, this kind of event. Uh, we're going to make them feel like there is a reason to be involved in this discussion. Your questions?
Thank you, Lee. And with that, if you have any questions for Chairman Huvard, or, or for Lee, or for myself, we're happy to take them. I, I should mention that the next steps in this would be, um, getting feedback from you all, the board, um, if you have any feedback for us on the direction of this plan, as you heard it this evening, um, and then on, uh, the selection of TESCA as, as our planning consultant. Um, if the board, uh, feels that TESCA is best qualified to handle this, um, you can direct us to prepare a resolution to bring back to you, uh, at a regular meeting, um, to authorize, uh, a contract for TESCA to move forward with, uh, with starting this plan. So with that, I'll open it up for, for any questions for any of us.
Uh, thank you. Uh, let, let me just say, um, sort of my gut reaction about retention of anybody is, oh, we should, you know, look out to look and get bids and what have you, um, but I, I, having thought about it, considered this, uh, I don't think that's appropriate here. Um, I think we waste probably time, energy, and money, um, if we started shopping this around. Uh, we know TESCA, they know us, they've been working with us. Um, I saw them in connection with the zoning board, I think other folks on the village board have worked with them, so I, I just want to say, I'm comfortable with TESCA, with Mr. Brown, um, and, and so I think we should get the show on the road, and then I'll, you know, I'll make one other comment. Um, we should work, we should work hard to make sure that our comprehensive plan is, uh, you know, going to help us going forward. Uh, we're not looking for student council, uh, and, 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 you know, I'm pretty confident, based on what we've seen, again, from TESCA, that, that they're best situated to do that. So.
I think so. I'm not sure if there's a history, that's just really valuable and, and about having to learn, you know, about us. But how, in, as a future, how do we have a global pandemic situation?
You talk about compared to doing an, an RFP?
Yeah, I mean, so, for example, I can tell you what an industry average would be, for example, to manage, to manage us, I know that, uh, it's really public too. So I'm just saying, have we done enough diligence where, where we can confidently tell people in the village that we, even that we can go to RFP, that we're comfortable with the bank, as long as we can do that, I'm like, I...
Would you like me to take that one?
If you want, I, I can fill in.
I, I've personally looked at the budgets of, of at least one, I, I can't remember if I've looked at more than one of our direct neighbors who've gone through a similar comprehensive planning process and what they budgeted for their consultants, and the quote that we got from TESCA was very competitive with what our, with what our neighbors are, are paying.
Anybody else have questions? Oh, we do, you know, there's, there was some discussion earlier about the people in the village and their special expertise, and, uh, we are lucky to have on the village board a professional planner, so, uh, trustee Onderdunk is our professional planner.
Thank you. The, uh, requests for proposal include some special studies. Could you expand on those a little bit and, um, uh, why they're in there and what they might, uh, look at? I expect that it helps us understand the present situation, but I'll let you talk about that.
Are you referring to the, the small-area studies?
Yes.
So, and Lee, you can, you can fill in the blanks.
And the housing study, too.
And the housing study. Lee, so I'd have to open up the proposal to know exactly where they are focused, but there are several areas, um, which we will likely feel that need more specific, um, policy recommendations, place-based policy recommendations. For example, Hubbard Woods, um, the Green Bay Road Corridor, um, maybe, uh, Highway Corridor, um, where they're likely to, to, to require a, a more detailed, um, closer look, um, for policy recommendations about how those areas may develop over the next 10, 20 years. Those areas that may be most susceptible to change in the coming years, um, as opposed to more broad, um, you know, village-wide, um, rec, policy recommendations that might apply to, for example, single-family homes throughout the village. Those areas are, you know, they're more susceptible to change, and for that reason, um, we intend to give them a closer look, um, and so that when people come in with proposals, uh, for those areas, we have some really solid, um, evidence-based and community-driven policies that are really can help us inform our staff, staff memo, staff recommendations, uh, board commission recommendations, and ultimately decisions by the village board. Is that, if that doesn't answer your question, I have to ask you.
I'm good, but if you want to say more, that's okay, too. Okay. Uh, I did have one other question. Some people define planning as the link between knowledge and action, and how do we, after we develop the plan, um, how do we, uh, move to the action stage? Um, will there be a series of policies or recommendations in there? Um, we've had some discussion in the past of the eco-district approach, and that talks a lot about, um, not only what's to be done, but, um, how it might be done. Is there a section in there on that as well?
There is, and if I, if I could just touch on eco-districts briefly, uh, eco-districts, for those who are unfamiliar with it, is a, uh, it's a, what's the best term, a system, an approach to planning, an approach to planning relatively new. Um, it focuses on, on, on some of the, you know, topics that are very similar to, to the more, um, I would say, the, the, the current best practices of, 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 uh, comprehensive planning. Um, we've had discussions about eco-works, um, eco, eco-districts, um, with the Plan Commission, Sustainability Task Force, um, some members of the village board. Um, and I, I think that we've, we've reached a consensus where, um, while, uh, using the actual eco-districts approach, the eco-districts... approach, the eco-districts branded approach is not likely to be necessary, we are... There's a consensus that the topics that that approach focuses on are essential parts, they will be essential parts of this discussion. And that we're not going to have a successful plan without talking about those topics and weaving them into this discussion, whether we use that approach or the, you know, let's say, the APA, Comprehensive Plan approach. That being said, yes, absolutely, implementation, ways to, you know, policies, programs, projects. There will absolutely be, you know, an outcome of this plan, you know, a work program of some form. I think that it's to be determined on a topic-by-topic basis, the specificity and the level of detail that those, that we're going to end up with there. I think that that's really something that's going to depend on where the Plan Commission and the village and the village board wants to end up with some of these things. Sometimes it might be very specific policy outcomes that come out of this, very specific projects that we put in the plan and we say, this is something we want to do in the next two years, this is something we want to do in the next five years. There might also be some topics where we get to the point where we just say, we want to do further study on this. We want to commission, for example, a sustainability action plan, or a climate action plan, or a housing study, or something like that. So I think that there will absolutely be, you know, implement, an implementation-based work program that comes out of this. The level of detail might vary from topic to topic, and I think that that's something that's going to come out of the planning process, as opposed to knowing beforehand exactly what that's going to look like. Anything to add to that?
I don't think that you should anticipate a 10-page, nine-point, single-spaced list of actions at the end of this document. That does no one any good. What we need ultimately is a combination of what are the priorities for the village and how will we measure success? And that would be built into the plan itself, rather than a document at the end that lists 500 things in a check-off system. It needs to be built into each of the chapters and each of the elements. So how will we measure when we get there, whether we are headed in the right direction, and how we're going to get there?
Can you use, example, one of your other projects, the number-one fire area?
Hmm. So we... Let me take it from the big ideas, because I think that that is a way of measuring. One of my communities identified, one of their big ideas was to become auto-optional, that they really wanted to aim their transportation, the land use, the community involvement in making it so that not everybody had to use a car to get to all the services and functions. And the measure was in essentially ridership and in the proximity of open space and other activities to each of the neighborhoods in the community.
One question. So we've seen your work before, we think you do a good job. My only question is, I've never gone through a comprehensive plan, so I don't know what alternatives are for a process. And while I agree with Howard in terms of cost and some of those things, but, you know, being new to the whole process, not seeing anything else as far as how we might create a comprehensive plan does cause concern for me. And so maybe you can address that?
Well, I think the first thing is that this lays out an approach, and it is not going to be locked in concrete from the day one, that these are the absolute content of the plan. I think that any planning process to be successful has to react to the community and the issues that come up during the process itself. It's necessary to establish a structure which involves actual meetings, actual open discussion with the community in order for those things to be calendarized. That's how you move it along. One of the problems that occurs in some communities as they're going through a comprehensive plan is it stalls in one issue or another, and the momentum of the process becomes a problem. What we have presented has been a well-established, over the last 10 years, change in the way planning is done. More than 10 years ago, when this existing plan was established, the process was based on something that was paid for by the federal government, what, 45 years ago, in 701 Planning? It was essentially a structure that was sort of laid out as being the best practice at the time, which was largely a sort of paternalistic, there's a guy at the top of this process who will direct this, and the issues are all checked off, that they meet the federal standards. That became a certainty that those documents sat on the shelf unused. They didn't direct the staff to be able to solve the problems as they went along, and they didn't reflect the community's interest. They were solid and robust documents that were never used. So the process of including actual engagement with members of the community is really fundamental to what you're seeing in the proposal for the process itself, that the Plan Commission becomes a steering committee and a focal point, but not the sole involvement. What happened in the past was, all meetings were the Plan Commission going through the chapter-by-chapter approach. And it is, it does not base itself on the resources of knowledge for the rest of the community. So to answer the question, how do you check this against other communities? I think that, one, we're using it on the basis of what we read and what we engage with at a national level in other communities and with other best-practice statements. The APA being the organization that planners are involved with, they have been very clear over the last 10 years to recommend a series of steps that, if followed, will result in a comprehensive plan that is useful. So consistency with that set of steps, you should be looking at whoever stands up here and does this with you should follow those basic steps.
Anybody else have...
Final comment. The plan is very timely. Our neighbors to the south, both Wilmette and Wanetta, are both undergoing a comprehensive plan at the present time. There may be some opportunity to borrow some ideas or opportunities to coordinate with them in the process as well. So it's a pretty interesting time for us all. Pardon?
Wilmette is, and we're currently working in Lake Forest on their comprehensive plan.
Hi, this is Keith. I've got a couple of quick questions.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. One is, I would suggest shifting from the notion of a plan as a written document on itself and shift into more of a live web version of our plan, which is more accessible and more easily updated. I think it's time to shift away from a plan as being something that's a period binder somewhere in the back of the village manager's office. So that, as I say, simply more accessible to all. That's one comment. Another, for TESCA, I've heard a lot of the right words, inclusion, diversity, eco-districts, sustainability, but some of those topics are contentious, and you mentioned you're very good at public engagement. So I'm curious on two things. One is, how willing or able do you feel you are to shake things up and address and lead these difficult conversations with a client you've had for 20 years and, you know, perhaps have a resistance to shake it up? Right? So how willing are we to be bold and to be disruptive in the long-term, with a long-term client? That's one of my sort of questions. I'll pause there.
Mr. Brown?
I don't pretend to be an expert in inclusion, and that is why we brought in C Change. They are experts in allowing the conversation to be fruitful without being uncivil. To allow us to use language that is supportive and challenging and to discuss issues that are uncomfortable in a way that is human, and that's not my expertise. That's the reason that we bring in those who can do that well. And Terry Johnson has worked directly with the school district on its most recent strategic plan for the same reason.
I would add one thing, Trustee Mulvaney, and this is a conversation that I have been a part of with Chairman Hubard and with Taylor on a number of occasions, and that is the discussion, the public discussion that takes place during the engagement process advises the ultimate plan that the village board will approve. The difficulty with those complex issues is that there is a predisposition or a hope that the planning process will solve those issues for our community. And I don't know that that is a good wish for a plan like this. I do think it is an important component of making sure that the plan acknowledges the right issues that the community is dealing with, and that it sets forth goals and objectives to work toward those, resolving those issues. And I think that happens in a variety of ways. It goes back to a question that Trustee Hallwax brought up, you know, what's measurable? Well, it may be the creation of another plan that complements the comprehensive plan. So there's, I think it's, it is a process, and that has very much been a part of our discussions leading up to tonight, is to make sure that we are creating an atmosphere where difficult conversations are possible, and then using that information to advise the plan development, and ultimately bring the village board along the way, because this becomes the board's plan to both consider, then approve, and then ultimately champion after that. Taylor, I don't know if you had something you wanted to say?
Nothing else, Ed?
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? If not, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Hubard, Mr. Brown, thank you for your presentations. Taylor will be back, of course, with our next item, but thanks. The next item on the agenda is item four, continued discussion of potential sign code updates. And Taylor Baxter, our Development Services Manager, is going to present on this as well.
President Rowan, if I could, just real quick, I think, just to bring that last item to a quick close, I know we're going to work on bringing a contract back to the village board, possibly as soon as next month, so that we can begin to roll out the engagement process. So you'll be seeing this item again soon in front of you.
Thanks, and yes, everybody agrees with that. Okay, Taylor?
President Rowan, we're back for another round of sign code discussion. Again, this may be the last one before it goes to the zoning commission, or it may not be, that is to be determined. We'll go to the next slide. So a reminder of where we've been with this, at our last committee of the whole meeting last month, we talked about window signs and a few of these problematic, kind of gray-area content-related signage types. And we got some feedback from the board at the last meeting regarding these sign types. One thing that was asked of staff at the last meeting was to research window signage regulations in nearby communities. Again, as a reminder, the path that we've taken in this proposed update is to limit policy changes wherever possible. We're not doing a full planning process for this sign code update, so we're trying to maintain the outcomes that we currently have in our sign code wherever possible, while improving the usability of the sign code and also bringing it more into compliance with recent Supreme Court decisions. So the biggest proposed policy change in this code update is to window signage. And that is really because the window signage that we see in our business districts downtown right now is very often not in strict compliance with the code, and it also really limits the flexibility of business owners to get what they want out of their signage. So we researched how our nearby, our neighbors handle window signage. It's a bit all over the place, a few patterns emerge here. The first one is that we're the only municipality nearby that limits window signage to only one sign, which causes a lot of problems for our businesses. If you go by the definition of sign, all downtown businesses, except for one, based on a recent walking audit, have more than one window sign. So this is, it's not something that's reflected in any of our neighbors. All of our neighbors have a percentage of window covering as part of, at least part of their window signage limits. It varies from anywhere from 10% to 30%. So there's not really necessarily a right answer here as far as what the right amount is. It's absolutely open for discussion. This is something that the zoning commission will discuss, too. Just as a way of illustration, here's an example from downtown. Our proposed code has, divides window signage into window areas, which is basically the parts of the windows that are not separated by architectural elements. So this would really be three window areas here, one on the left, then the door-window area, and then the window area on the right. Next slide, please. So just as an example for what you might, you know, for what these different percentages might look like in practice, this window area has about 12.5% covering. It has one, two, three, four, probably consider that four different sign areas totaling 12.5%. Next slide, please. This window area is about 7.5%. So you can see about what this looks like in practice. So I don't have an answer for what the ideal percentage is here. I think it's open to discussion. We do have, our downtown guidelines, as I mentioned last time, do not provide really, don't provide strict guidance for a percentage here. But again, they do, I think, tend to favor signage that is relatively simple, a cleaner look. Those are things that it recommends, as opposed to more haphazard signage. That might be a guide towards maybe the lower end of this range, but that's something that I think that the zoning commission and this, the village board should give some consideration to. Again, when we take this to the zoning commission, it will be a public hearing, and we do intend to reach out to business owners downtown for their feedback as part of that hearing process. But this is just intended to give you a visual for what these different percentages may require. The draft code right now has 15%, but again, that's absolutely open for discussion by you and the zoning commission. Next slide, please. The next really tricky part of the code that we talked about last time was these gray-area, kind of in-between, content-related sign types. Right now, each of these sign types, real estate, construction, political, private sale, and civic event signs, are all heavily content-related, which again, is something that we absolutely want to avoid to the extent possible. We don't want to have to read the signs to determine whether or not the sign is allowed or not. And so we are proposing to get rid of the content-based parts of these definitions. Actually, let me walk that back a little bit. What this draft code that you have in front of you today proposes is to combine all of these sign types under a new sign type, which is standard informational signage. And standard informational signage is a sign type that is completely content-free. Next slide, please. That does not mean that it's necessarily just a free-for-all. Their, the code prohibits elimination of standard informational signs, and it has size and number limits. So, for example, on a standard residential lot, you would have a single standard informational sign could not be bigger than six square feet, and you would not be allowed to have more than 10 square feet total on a residential lot. So we would absolutely, we would not be looking at the content of the sign any longer, but it does not mean you could just put up however many signs you want to put up. but it does not mean you could just put up however many signs you want to put up. Next slide. The code now, as proposed, tries to approximate what we currently get out of these different sign types by allowing extra standard informational signage allowances at different times. So it proposes standard informational signage replacing real estate, construction, and civic event signs with the same amount that is currently available on properties throughout the village. So for example, if you're allowed a six-square-foot real estate sign right now, that has strict content guidelines to it, what the code proposes now is to allow an extra six-square-feet of standard informational signage when a house is for sale or for rent, without content restrictions on it. Same thing with construction signs and civic event signs. Whatever you're allowed now, you would, the code proposes to allow you the same amount of signage, but instead of it being these content-based sign types, it's a content-free standard informational sign. So there actually is a certain loss of control over the content of signage based on, compared to what we have today. That is the outcome of Supreme Court rulings over the last decade. Civic event signs specifically, this is something that may not really need extra allowance. This is something for, for example, an event that is tied to some civic purpose. Right now, it specifically says in the code that the village manager can approve civic event signs tied to a civic purpose. This may be something that the zoning commission and the village board feels can be handled by just your everyday standard informational signage allowance, and you don't need extra signage during a civic event. That's something that is quite possible. The code that you have, the draft code that you have now eliminate, does not have extra allowance for private sales, a yard sale, a garage sale. We feel that if you're allowed to have standard informational signage on your property at any time, you don't necessarily need an extra allowance for, when you're having a yard sale or a garage sale. That's something that's typically handled pretty informally, anyway. Next slide, please. Political signs, these are very tricky. The current practice, the longstanding practice has been something along the lines of one sign per candidate, which is not something that the Supreme Court has upheld. It's not, it is not allowed, restrictions such as that one. Right now, political signage can typically be put up at any time under your normal standard informational signage allowance. The code now allows basically unlimited, an unlimited number of political signs with content restrictions during election season. In residential districts only, what this draft sign code revision proposes is to try and maintain as closely as possible the current policy, an unlimited number of standard informational signs in residential districts during election season, which is defined in the code by a certain number of days before and after an election. So again, it's a tricky, it's a tricky sweet spot to find there about to try and maintain our current allowance of signage while also necessarily losing some amount of control over the content of that signage. These are things that are open for further discussion. Next slide, please. So the next steps are to direct staff to prepare an agenda item. If you feel that this is ready to move forward to the zoning commission, direct staff to prepare an agenda item for referral to the zoning commission for a public hearing with any appropriate revisions that you feel are necessary. Again, this is, a lot of these things are open for discussion. And if you feel that more revisions or more discussion is necessary before that point, we're happy to hear it. The village attorney informed me this afternoon that there was a somewhat important Supreme Court decision, which was, I guess it came out this afternoon or this morning, which has some impact on Reed versus Towne &amp; Gilbert, which is kind of the underlying Supreme Court decision that removes most of our ability to regulate based on content. And I'll let the village attorney give us an update on that.
Thank you. The justices knew that Glencoe was having its 39th reading about signs, and issued an opinion that actually took a step toward the balance of regulation after the Reed decision. The Supreme Court decision actually favored the municipal regulation. It's the first time in a long time the court has done that. There was still a divided court, and so if there's a further regulation, we can't be certain that the court will rule the same way. But it was a, I believe, a good step. Our proposed revision that Taylor very capably described to you and that you've seen in your agenda and that you've seen at past meetings does take some steps. We take some liberties based on what we believe is a fair reading of the Reed versus Gilbert as opposed to a strict reading of the Reed versus Gilbert decision. And we put together what we believe to be a practical application. And that was your direction, actually, at the last Village Board meeting, not to go all-out in compliance and not to ignore the Supreme Court decisions, but to find a practical balance. We did, and as if they heard us, the justices blessed that approach, I believe, in the decision that was handed down this afternoon.
Thank you. If anyone has any questions for either of us?
Thank you. My question actually had to do with something that wasn't discussed today, but was in the text of the draft ordinance. That's the definition of sign.
Yes.
Which is what this is all about. And one concept, and that's the best way to put it, that I found missing in the laundry list of when you're trying to describe what's a sign. Well, it could be, you know, it's this physical manifestation about, and then it has object. You know, it's got 25 words. But one word that wasn't there that I think needs to be is idea. Because I was talking with our village manager, and I'm saying, so if I want to have a giant sign that just says "freedom", and it's 100 square feet, I don't see that our standard informational sign regulation prevents me from doing it, as long as I don't put maybe flashing lights on it. So I think we need to tinker a little bit with the language. Not to get into what ideas might be, right? Not to get into content, but just that it needs to be broader, actually, than what seems like a broad ordinance.
If I may, Mr. President, respond?
Absolutely.
That's an excellent point. What we did, just to be clear, we kept your definition and really didn't touch it just because we didn't want to open a Pandora's box. And with idea, you can get concept. I mean, there's a lot, a lot of places to go. I have no problem adding the word idea. The question, though, that we tried to stay away from, and the question we have of the board is, do you want us to open up the existing definition and start looking at it? Or do you want to limit it to just that one word, or?
Well, again, I only speak for myself, and that, I don't pretend to speak for the board here. But I just think that, given the goal of revising the sign ordinance and going to, you know, standard informational sign concept, and something that's a little easy, you know, in that context, revising it for the retailers in particular, in terms of trying to create something that's more practical and usable for them, I think we should, that list maybe needs to be shortened, broadened, however you want to say it, so that it's more all-encompassing. And if that means adding words, changing words, that's just my personal opinion. I think we ought to do it.
Anybody else have a, Trustee, on?
Many of my neighbors have students at New Trier, and it seems like every sports team has their own sign, whether it's diving, or football, or lacrosse, or whatever. Would that be accommodated under the new ordinance?
It would be a standard informational sign, and subject to the limits. If you happen to be on that team during an election time period, you can have as many of those signs as you want. But otherwise, you'd be subject to the limit on size of signs, because we wouldn't be looking at the particular nature of the sign. And I do think, just pause for a minute, I think that that is important. Because you don't tend to think about the signs about high school students that are on sports teams, or somebody asking somebody out for prom and the sign. Those would all be covered here. And if you have a kid that's maybe going to prom and a kid that has a sports team at the same time, there may be an issue there, because there would be two signs, unless you're doing it during an election season, or unless your house is for sale. Those are, those are some of the practical issues that we, that just will naturally flow from this code revision. And I'm being cute now, but I want to be, I want to be serious and make sure that you're aware of that. So yes, that would be covered and considered to be a standard informational sign. And we would not look to see what's on it.
Pete, Trustee Mulvaney, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, thank you. I'm wondering if it's helpful at this point to develop some principles which might fit in the preamble, which helps to define the intention and spirit as we tinker and develop with the fact wording and as the regulations evolve to make it easy. But perhaps we can, we can at least agree through the principles by which we want the signage to be managed. So a principle could be then interpreted to allow the flexibility and the key examples provided by the attorney.
Okay. Thanks. Let me say, and this responds a little bit to Trustee Mulvaney and also to Trustee Rubin's point. I think we're here for, because one reason is that the Supreme Court did some stuff, and it made us think, oh, our ordinance might not be legal, and we want to fix that. We're also here because staff has identified that we have some restrictions that we're not really set on, and which nobody is following anyway. So, and that's, you know, it's bad when you have a bunch of restrictions and nobody's following them. So we're trying to update and fix our ordinance to reflect guidance on the Constitution from the U.S. Supreme Court, and guidance from staff as to where it doesn't work. And I think we've gotten good advice from our counsel on how to deal with the constitutional issue. And we've gotten some advice from staff on how we might want to tinker with the restrictions to reflect reality. And then we can also look to see, okay, do we want to change this, if we can figure it out? And I would say to our counsel, because you're in this business, if you see other things in our ordinance that ought to get fixed, because it's, you know, to pick, you know, Trustee Rubin's example, it's just not an elegant definition, we would welcome the advice. So I wouldn't, you know, we're doing this, we're looking at it. While you're looking at it, we should get whatever advice anybody has on how it might be fixed. I'm not, we're not looking for, I don't think we have a different idea. I'm not positive we would be doing this if the Supreme Court hadn't been sort of tinkering with the First Amendment, with what the First Amendment means. I understood what it meant back when I was in law school. It's really different now, really different. I'm not sure it's an improvement now, but it's different, so we're just trying to deal with that. So, but I would welcome your advice as we're fixing this thing. Anybody, anybody? Okay. Taylor, what else?
I would just ask if you're comfortable with us preparing an agenda item to move this forward to the zoning commission, and if so, if you have any direction or updates?
Taylor, did we, did we, do we want to ask again if there are any further comments relative to the downtown business district signage?
The window signage?
Limitations that we've put forward in this draft? Is there any, we, I don't want to say we skipped over that, but I know you put some, you asked for some feedback on that.
Could I, let me just say, you know, I thought Taylor talked about it a little bit. He said, well, you know, 10%, 20%, 30%, we don't really know. Sitting here, I don't have a clue. And that's sort of what the zoning commission is for, is to sort of flush all that out and see what they think, and get their advice back. So I'm, I don't, no.
It's a totally, it's a totally good question. I just don't have an answer.
And I'd welcome advice. I don't know if anybody else does either. Sounds like, no. Pete, you're, you know, my view, let's get the show on the road. We have another year before the Supreme Court might futz with it again. So let's do our best. Yes.
So your next step, it'll be on a future agenda of the village board to man down to the zoning commission?
Yes, and the zoning commission would have hearings.
Public hearing, correct.
And then make a recommendation that they send back to the zoning commission?
And, you know, and that's a, that's a good time to, if you've identified other things that could be upgraded or fixed. I'd say this, I don't know whether this is state-of-the-art, but the informational sign idea, that's, that seems pretty elegant. And might work, and it might be a problem if somebody wants to put up two signs and there's no election, but, you know, we'll do the best we can. Okay, Taylor, thank you. So that was the last item planned on the agenda. The next item, numbered six, there is no five, is there any other business any member of the board would like to discuss? I don't see that. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Real call.
You can do a voice out now?
All in favor?
Trustee Mulvaney is here, not on.
Yeah, we did the right process.
The motion carries. We're adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for coming.
Pete, we will call you back before this, at the 7:00.